Welcome everyone to the April 26, 2017, meeting of the North Idaho College Board of Trustees. Would you please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We have a verification of a forum, or quorum. The trustee Myers is not here this evening. Unfortunately, she's out sailing in the Caribbean. And President McLennan is going to be here in a few minutes. He had another important function he had to attend to right at 6 o'clock, but he should be here in about 15 minutes. Now we'll call for a review of the minutes. Are there any corrections, additions, or modifications to the minutes?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I do have some corrections to the minutes on page one. If we could spell the names correctly for the students that were celebrated, celebrating success, and then also add what they were connected to. For example, the Green Dot Campaign. And then on page two, we just have one word change. It says "reserve" and it should be "reverse."
So that's a motion to amend?
Correct.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes stand as corrected. I don't think anyone signed up for public comment this evening, and so we'll move right into one of the most enjoyable parts of these meetings. It's celebrating success tonight at the Idaho Center of Excellence Healthcare Partnership, and Christie Doyle is going to lead it off. Christie?
Chair Howard, members of the board, and I wish President McLennan was here as well as trustee Meyer. I'm sorry that she is not able to be here. She has such an affinity to healthcare, we really would like to be able to even maybe possibly give this presentation to her in person. Really value all of the work that she does for healthcare. So my name is Christie Doyle, Dean of Health Professions and Nursing, and I have with me Drew Hatfield, who is the Project Director for the Idaho Center of Excellence Healthcare Partnership, or ICE, as we lovingly call it. We're excited to be here today to share a snapshot, and truly just a brief snapshot, of the work we have done over the past two and a half years. If you recall, in 2014, North Idaho College was awarded a $6.4 million Trade Adjustment Assistance Community College Career Training Grant, TACT, and ICE has served as the lead institution in partnership with Idaho State University's College of Technology and Lewis Clark State College. The consortium takes a collective, comprehensive approach in serving Idaho's TAA in addition to low-skill adults, dislocated workers, and unemployed and underemployed individuals. So I'd like to start by sharing with you the team, and we don't have time to go and showcase all of them, but who you see before you is Idaho State University College of Technology. This is their leadership, their staff and their faculty, who either work directly on the grant or who have oversight over the grant. This is Lewis Clark State College, again, their leadership and folks that work on the grant, faculty and staff as well. And for those involved in ICE here at North Idaho College, in any component, would you please stand as well? Thank you. You may be seated. So as you can see, a $6.4 million consortium project requires many, many hands to implement. In addition to the many hands who have been working on implementation, the ICE leadership team also serves as an oversight body, and our membership comes from education, state, industry, labor, and evaluator entities. The leadership team is similar in function as to our program advisory committees, except that on a broader scope, so they have multiple program pathways that they oversee rather than one individual program. They are comprised, the leadership team is comprised of high executives, high-level executives and technicians from large corporations and small companies alike, who understand the current state of the industry and what skills land students' jobs. The team also has members from the Idaho CTE, the Governor's Health Professions Task Force, and the Idaho Department of Labor. The leadership team works as a whole to create a statewide system to deliver programs without duplication of efforts. And Drew is going to talk about the grant activities and the outcomes.
As Christie mentioned, I'm Drew Hatfield, and I am the Director of Idaho Center of Excellence Healthcare Partnership. So for today, we have six core elements that are identified in our statement of work, but for this presentation, we're just going to group them into three overarching themes. In career pathways, we modified 10 current allied health programs, either by purchasing equipment or by modifying the curriculum so it's in a distributive hybrid model, meaning that the students do their lecture work online, and then they go to the classroom to do their lab. We've purchased over $300,000 in equipment, and we plan to purchase another half a million in the next six months. So either by modifying the curriculum or purchasing equipment, we're really expanding the offerings throughout the three colleges. With student support, we have specific individuals that are for ICE participants, but we've also looked at doing a multi-year analysis of our community college survey of student engagement and the community college of faculty-student engagement, which you might know by Sessi or Sesvi. What we're going to do with those surveys, we're just in the very beginning, is really bring more collaboration and enhancement in students in the classroom and outside the classroom with their engagement. And the most of all, collaboration. Really, administration, faculty, staff, industry have a line to meet the industry, meet healthcare industry needs. For the grant to be successful and for our deliverables and activities to be met, we've really had to align our systems at the state level, the college level, and at the program level, which is really the mission of ICE. So this is something that was a very big deal to us. The North Idaho College Simulation Center was not originally in the grant statement of work, but through the leadership team, most specifically Cutney Health, they identified the need for a high-fidelity simulation center in the region, and we were able to respond to that. We rewrote the grant and included it, and we were able to build this $317,000 lab inside Meyer Health Science Building. As you can see, the simulation center has been a little bit of our baby. Likewise, at ISU, the Occupational Therapy Assistant Program was not in our original statement of work, and with the help of leadership team and ISU's staff, we were able to get this launched. This is them at their opening in February. One of our grant deliverables was a website that we had to create, which was really just to provide information to the public as to what federal dollars we're doing. We took this a step further and created a Student Success Center online, which is a hub for resources for students to access across the state. And I'm sure you're wondering about enrollment. So I've broken it down into a few slides here, starting with our medical coding, pharmacy technology, EMS, occupational therapy assistant, and medical assistant. They range from about 16 students up to 53. Our veteran-to-nurse medical laboratory technology and mental health range from five students up to 12. And then our CNA and pre-medical range from 105 to 280. There is a measure on here for course level. We also modified some prerequisite courses that are online to meet a quality matter standard, and there's about 415 participants that have benefited from that. So here's the grant outcomes. This is what we promised to the Department of Labor when we wrote our statement of work. They'll use this to measure our success of the grant. They have very specific definitions that I won't go into because it took me a year and a half to learn them. I don't think we have that much time today. So the one I want to point out most of all is our target number of participants served. We were shooting for 506, and we're currently at 964. And by the end of the grant, we anticipate of having 1,870. So for sake of time, I'm going to go ahead and skip to slide 16, which you guys have these in your packets, so you can go ahead and look at them at your convenience. So this is employment numbers. Now, they might like look a little weird because of definitions. So for an individual to qualify for our first measure, unemployed after they've graduated from a program of study, they have to come into the program unemployed. We're only seeing about 25% of our students coming into a program unemployed. So 75% of our students are employed and trying to work through college while they're, or work through school while they're working. And in addition to having to be unemployed, they also have to respond to our homegrown survey of employment within the quarter we're allowed to track them. The second measure up here is a subset of that measure. So they have to qualify for this, they have to, one, be unemployed when they start the program, two, respond to the survey in which we're allowed to collect that unemployment information, and three, respond to a follow-up survey. So really, these two graphs, as we're not meeting the numbers, are not to say that we're not meeting the numbers. It's really just about collection of homegrown surveys. And I'm happy to say that yesterday, we received confirmation from the State Board of Education that we are into a wage data sharing agreement. So we will now be able to send our data from the grant to the state, who will work with the Idaho Department of Labor to get us real numbers. Although those numbers look low, this number is a great one. These are individuals that come into our program as incumbent workers and receive a wage increase. We originally thought it would only be about 35 people. Now we're at 57, and we anticipate to get all the way up to 216 by the end of the grant. I spoke a little bit before about individuals that were specifically available for ICE participants. We have student success navigators at all three of the colleges. The one here at NIC has spent over, has visited with over 500 current NIC students and 352 potential students. This is about 663 hours of contact with students or potential. This position is designed to really provide a high-touch support to students. So the top three services that we've been seeing our students have needed are early alert interventions, developing educational plans, and just general advising. We also have an employment transition coordinator. This position serves the whole consortium, but she is housed here at NIC. She's spent over 550 hours communicating with students, providing them real-time labor market information, career support and resume preparation, mock job interviews and job readiness. She connects with students throughout the whole state by going to their colleges, phone calls, and interactive collaboration tools. Through her work with Idaho Department of Labor, NIC Career Services, workforce training, employers, program directors, advisory boards, she's able to work directly with employers to find the graduates that best meet their needs.
So anticipating that trustee Wood would ask this question again, as she did during her initial presentation back in 2014, and in keeping with the themes that we identified in the slides earlier, we offer the following sustainability efforts, but keep in mind that we still have about a year left of the grant. So under career pathways, we have, all the education partners have actually requested through Idaho CTE, a total of eight line item requests for the faculty positions and the programs themselves. We still have one program, actually here at North Idaho College, that we will be submitting a fiscal year '19 as part of our packaged line item request to Idaho CTE. But in all reality, that is really, really good, that all the partners have been able to come up with those line item requests from Idaho CTE. Very excited about that. The education partners are beginning to work on MOUs, or Memorandums of Understanding, to clearly identify areas of responsibility for shared programs. For example, you know, now that the grant is over, who's going to keep the labs maintained? How is the equipment going to be modified, if it needs to be modified or updated? So we're going to be working through all of that still. We haven't got there yet. The pathway teams will continue to meet to discuss the various facets of the consortium programs. For example, when a team determines a curriculum change is needed, you know, what's the process at each institution to make that happen, and then what changes do those curriculum changes have on the program, but also on the institution? Things that we didn't think about, because our processes are so very different, that we're really having to really delve into a little bit more deep and figure out what that's going to look like as we progress forward with these shared programs. Very complex. This has been a very complex grant. Regarding prior learning assessment, very excited that Idaho State University's College of Technology has actually developed some standard practices to award credit for prior learning, and it's specific right now for the veterans' population, for those that are in the Veterans and Nurse Program. But those practices that they have identified, we are now beginning to look at for some of our other programs, and we're aligning them and looking at them in terms of our program and crediting requirements, so excited to see what that might be in the future as well. Regarding student support, as Drew was mentioning, we are just beginning to review the areas where we may offer professional development for our ICE program faculty using the Sessi and the Sesvi survey results. So the results from the Sesvi can enable institutions to view faculty expectations and perceptions of student engagement alongside student responses. Although it's not entirely equivalent, there are approximately 100 data, common data points between these two surveys, and we will have our first meeting to begin discussing those after commencement, after a little bit of the chaos settles down, right? We have invited others with an instruction, as well as student services, into this conversation to collaborate on activities that might benefit both ICE and North Idaho College as a whole. One thing that I'm very excited about regarding the transition, student transitions from workforce training, we have not tracked that in the past. We have, because of the ICE grant and because we have actual individuals who've been able to meet with individuals out at the, for, in the CNA program, I'm sorry, at workforce training. We actually have been able to track since summer of 2016, the number that transitioned from non-credit CNA into our courses that are for credit here at North Idaho College. Not a program specifically, but the courses here. And so far, we have 40 unduplicated students that have made that transition just since summer of '16. Some more to come on that. We're very excited about that. All-new territory for us to kind of look into, so that's a great thing. In terms of collaboration with the ICE Healthcare Partnership leadership team, you know, they have done some amazing work for us and have really supported all the work that we've been doing. We are going to go back and revisit with them now the mission and what that looks like for a next step. So hopefully, the next couple of months, we'll be able to kind of flesh out what that might be. We've had several other entities very interested in coming to the table and partnering with us on that leadership team. So again, you know, more time to kind of delve into that a little bit more. So these are some student quotes, and I apologize for the small print, and we won't read them, but I do just want to encourage you to read them at your convenience. They really do serve as an example as to the impact that this grant has really had in the areas of curriculum, student services support, and employment. So before we stand for questions, I do want to give a shout-out to my colleagues at Idaho State University, Scott Rasmussen, and Lewis Clark State College, Rob Lorremeyer, who has since retired, since we wrote this grant. But honestly, without their faith and trust in North Idaho College, their understanding and value of this project, and their ability to see the vision, our success truly would not have been realized. And they have continued from the beginning to now to be just amazing partners with us in this project. I cannot speak highly enough of the teamwork and the collaboration that has gone on in the midst of a lot of systems that are very different. It's just, it's been a unique, unique situation to be in. I also want to publicly acknowledge Drew Hatfield. She did not know I was going to do this. I really, if you can't tell, Drew actually embodies the ICE Healthcare Partnership. Her project management skills and her ability to lead this effort has been exceptional and truly beyond my expectations. She actually, we used to meet a lot when we were first getting off the ground, and I'll never forget, Drew came into my office and she goes, "I just want to get into your head." So I have to say, she's clearly gotten into my head and has done just an amazing job with this grant. I just, I cannot thank her enough for all of her work. So with that, we will stand for your questions.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yep, question? Well, for either Christie or Drew. Well, first of all, wonderful presentation, very, very well done. And a quick suggestion, Mr. Chair, today, the board toured the Student Rec Center. I missed it, but I bet it was great. But I think it would be fun to maybe tour the simulation center sometime. Maybe we could set that up. The other question I had, you-
Are you looking for volunteers for any procedures or anything?
Don't bet you know about that.
Bedpan duty for you. I just, this data is so wonderful, but I had just a quick question on what kind of jobs, if you'd just tell me what kind of, I know probably Cutney and Vonnor, but what exactly are they doing?
Chair Howard, trustee Wood, thank you. So a lot of our data's been coming from the CNA cohorts, just because there's the turnaround that is so quick. And so they are going into their field of CNA. We're seeing a lot of individuals that are really going into the program of study that they've been in. A lot of our two-year programs, like Medical Laboratory Technology, hasn't finished up yet, so the most, most of the graduates have been in medical assistance, which all of them are being employed as a medical assistant, pharmacy technology, and if they choose to be employed, they're pharmacy technicians, and then our CNAs as well. After the cohort of veteran-to-nurse students graduates down in ISU, they'll either be going into nursing school, because it's a fast track to get them into their RN, or they can go work as an LPN as well. So it's really all the healthcare. There is a bunch of different jobs in our grant, because there's a huge need for healthcare employees across the state, and there always will be.
Just one more quick comment, Mr. Chair. I, you know, I'm dealing with a serious family illness, and so I'm at the hospital almost every day. And I have, first of all, it's wonderful care there, but so many former NIC students are taking care of my family member, and they're wonderful, so, great program.
Ladies, a couple of questions. The grant itself, the $6.4 million, for how long a period of time is that for, and is this a renewable grant, and if so, when would you have to reapply for it?
Chair Howard and trustee Banducci, it is, it does end March of 2018, and we have already asked for our extension that we would have been allowed, it would have been a six-month extension, so we've already have asked for that. So it does end March of 2018, and is not renewable.
Follow on, sir. And I'll have one more additional question. For the six months, is there additional funding that would come with that extension?
Chair Howard, trustee Banducci, there was a no-cost extension, so we have the $6.4 million, and we actually will stop spending in March of '18, but then there will be six more months of evaluation and reporting, and we do have a position that will be continuing through that time.
I've got a couple more questions, so bear with me.
Correct.
Because this is good stuff, but I'm curious, because one of the things that interests me is the sustainability. You're doing some good things here, and I want to ask another question in a moment on that, but the grant is ending, you've spent the money, you've got the six months for the evaluation period, and then maybe if there's any few leftover pennies, I guess, to deal with. Now, how do you, how do we fund that going forward?
So Chair Howard and trustee Banducci, we actually, as I was mentioning earlier, under the career pathways component, we have actually requested through Idaho CTE fiscal line item requests for those faculty positions, and they have been funded all but one at this point, in terms of the faculty and the programs themselves. The student services components, we are really looking at integrating those into existing services. One of the things that I was really focused on in the very beginning was not to duplicate services, so we really did try to pull in existing student services folks to help with what we were doing around those grant activities. And again, why we're looking at other instructional areas and student services for the Sesvi and the Sesvi, determining what those activities need to be moving forward, not just for ICE, but as a consortium, or as a college.
How many FTE did they actually fund then? You said all but one for your request?
Oh, oh, oh. So-
I, that's not the right word. That's a student term. How many faculty?
So eight. There are eight faculty. Between ISU and NIC, there are eight faculty, right?
Do they give you a pot of money that is equivalent to eight faculty positions, where you could move it around as you saw fit, or they actually say it's eight positions?
So it comes through the line item request through Idaho CTE, and so it's standard, it follows the standard budgeting process as all the institutions go through.
One of the things I was noticing in here, you were talking about some of the services provided. I like that early alert. That sounds almost like Graydon's intentional, you know, counseling, that you're reaching out there early before they get in too much jeopardy. I think that's great. I know my youngest son could use that when he was in college, but, and I'm looking at the time spent, you've got the navigator doing about 50 minutes per student with the contacts. When I look at the employment transition coordinator, it indicates that there's 137 students, but yet she's, she or he have 552 hours, and then it says average time spent with a student is one hour. Is there other things going on, or should that maybe have been a four?
Yeah. Thank you, Chair Howard and trustee Banducci. There are other things going on. So with, that's what she has done at NIC with students, and she's traveling around the state, meeting with all the other stu, all the other students that are in the other consortium college, colleges, as well as she's communicating with them a lot through emails, because one of the requirements of our grant is that we're sending them labor market information and talking to them about what is happening in their region for jobs. So there's a lot of that that is going on that, that causes more time spent.
Okay, so this was reflective more of face-to-face time, and then there's all the additional electronic communications, telephonic, everything else?
Yes.
And administrative time or whatever. Okay, a lot of time. Very busy.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank you both for the presentation. I know there's a lot of people that are in the background of this. You're impacting the economy, you're impacting students' lives so that they can have a livable wage when they, they leave, so those things are to be commended. It looks like a lot of work, a lot of moving parts. Anytime you bring in more than one entity and try to pair things together, there's some chaos, and I know you probably went through that. My interest is in some of that process of how you did all that. I'm interested in the hybrid class. You said there's an online lecture, is it that kids from, students from NIC, LCSC, ISU can all participate in an online lecture, one person given a lecture, and they go back to their collected labs to pull that off? And do any of the other offerings at ISU or LCSC have a simulation lab that is similar to what NIC has?
So, thank you Chair Howard and trustee Murray. So what I would say to you in terms of, there's two different things. The programs themselves, yes, they have a didactic component, it is all online, and they come to campus one day a week or two days a week for their lab. That's for the program itself. And then we have our courses that we have modified that are AMP, not necessarily AMP, sorry, Paul. Some of the other courses that we have modified, we have a math CTE class that we did, and I can't think of what the other ones are at this point. We have some other courses that we have, COM, sorry, COM 101. There's too many things going on in this grant, I can't keep them all straight. So those actually, you can integrate those. So there will be students that are in, multiple students in that one class, so they can be at, out at Rastrow, or they could be anywhere for that course level course, but not for the program overall. Is that what you're asking?
I think, I'll talk about Farm Tech.
You can talk about Farm.
So Farm Tech is actually, our program here at North Idaho College was the only accredited program in the state, and so ISU and LCSC were very much interested in that. So what we were able to do the last couple of years was share that program. And so our program director put all of their, her work online, the didactic, and so they are all in one course together that is an online through our learning management system, Blackboard, and then they go to their labs. And so there's a lab down at LCSC where there is an adjunct faculty that runs their labs, and down at ISU as well. So it is one program that we did share and the model that you were kind of speaking to.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Before you sit down, I want to thank you on behalf of the board, but on behalf of the college, quite frankly, you know, over a period of time, we hear of these programs, and we see the bits and pieces sitting up here, but you bring it all together and you show us what a success this can be, and it's really pretty exhilarating, I got to tell you. Sitting here and listening about the report, about how well it's done, and how well you expect it to do in the future, is, is pretty satisfying. And I want to, again, thank you on behalf of the college for all the work that you and your entire team have done. I know this was a complicated process. I know it was a complicated thing to get through with all the different institutions and everything, and to see it turn out so well, it's pretty, pretty exciting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we now move to the constituent reports. Asnik, Sean Collins. Asnic, Sean Collins. Are you a short timer, Sean?
Yeah. Good evening, Board. Good evening, President's Cabinet. Good evening, guests. So, Asnic is, we had an election over the past month. It was great. We had a total turnout of votes, of 361 votes, which was up quite a bit from previous year. So, I was really proud of those numbers. Our new president, Caleb, do you want to come up here? You have to. Our new president is Caleb Weeks. He won with 193 votes versus 160. Pretty good accomplishment, I thought. And then, our new vice president, his name is Robert Smith. And then, our various senators are Allison Albritton, Ben Anderson, Elizabeth Miller, Josh Grant, Martha Barbe, Michaela Clocklo, and Sarah Wagner. And they'll be serving for the next year, so you get to see and hear their names for the upcoming year. Other than that, we worked on normal Asnic business. One of the resolutions we passed at the most recent board meeting was a ride-share resolution, putting pressure to our parking people in charge of parking to create a couple of spots for people to do ride-sharing. We want to encourage more people to carpool, and we think that's a good initiative to work on. Another initiative, we have a senator who's been talking about this for a year. He really loves the trash cans right outside the sub, how the trash and the recycle are right next to each other. And it's a pretty common thing wherever you go, and he wants to see more of that at NIC. So, he got us to buy one down for the beach. That was a really, he says it's the future of NIC anytime he brings it up. I think it's a wonderful initiative as well, but I don't know if that's the, that's the one thing, the one future. The other resolution we passed is, we just want to continue to seek options for a point-of-sale system at Emory's. Continue to work with the administration to see that happen. We have a lot of students who don't carry cash anymore, and they'd like to buy food at Emory's. And then, other than that, we've been attending the new LMS selection, which should be an interesting process. Right now, we have Blackboard. We had Canvas and...
Brightsite.
Brightsite? Bright, Brightspace?
Brightspace.
Brightspace? Yeah. Those two come, and we have two students on that committee. So, hopefully, we'll be seeing which one gets picked and how it'll work out. Other than that, we're moving everything over to the new board. We've got an Asnic banquet on May 3 at 5:30. You should have all gotten invites, hopefully. Hope to see all of you there. It's usually a good time. And yeah, that's my final report. Oh, and I just want to say, because this is my last, one of my last chances to speak in public, that it's been a really great honor to serve the students, and I really appreciate the administration for all the work that you've helped us through in student government, and all the work the board, listening to us and hearing our concerns. I think this is a really important process, and it's, it's been, it's been great for me. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, Chris?
Well, first off, I will see you at the banquet. I've RSVP'd. Looking forward to it.
Sounds good.
Secondly, would love to get a list of the new officers, if we could. That would be great. And then, third, one of the things that you'd had as a goal was to have some competitive races. Now, it sounds like it was competitive for the president. Did you have enough numbers to fill it out? Were there any other competitive races?
The, sorry. The vice presidential race was also competitive. Brad Darrow had 124, 124 for votes, and Robert Smith had 216. Sorry, I just got over pneumonia, so I'm...
Oh, no, no, you're fine.
Yeah.
I was just curious.
Yeah. And the senatorial race, unfortunately, there was one seat unfilled, so that one was non-competitive this year. But they were able to hold, usually when that happens, we appoint a person, and the people who didn't win their, their position applied for the position afterward, and they selected Edwin Amador to fill that position. So...
Christie.
Sean, it's been awesome working with you. This is the time of year when we have to say goodbye to our student reps and welcome the new ones. But how about, tell us a little bit about what you're going to do next.
Oh, I'm off to Moscow in the fall. You might see me around here during summer, because I plan to work here, and I'm taking a sailing class. But in the fall, I'll be off to Moscow at U of I, continue to study history and political science, and then, maybe someday come back to this institution, if possible.
We're going to hold you to that.
All right.
Great, great working with you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Sean, before you leave, let me thank you for your efforts during your term as representing the student body. You've done a great job. You really have. You brought their concerns to us, and you've given us an opportunity to have some insight into what the student body's thinking. And you've presented yourself well during these meetings, and I think your future bodes well for you. So, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next report is staff assembly. Teresa.
Good evening, everyone. Chair Howard, this month's staff assembly had some outside guest speakers from the Kootenay County Prosecutor's Office. We had Paul Farina and Lonnie Whitman come and speak to us about internet crimes against children. It was a pretty eye-opening discussion, I have to say. They came and told us basically how to keep our kids safe and how to keep ourselves safe on the internet, you know, not to be silly and post too much stuff and too much information. But was really eye-opening was that Facebook, Pinterest, Snapchat, all those platforms are basically used by predators. And that was, that was a bit frightening to hear. So, I thought it was a good eye-opening conversation. Andrea Wimper, our benefit specialist, came and talked to us as well about open enrollment. So, between May 1 and May 12, all benefit-eligible employees at NIC should be electing their benefits this year. And that concludes my report.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Teresa. Next report is on the faculty assembly. Jeff.
Thank you, Trustee Howard and fellow trustees. This month of faculty assembly, we welcomed Thomas Scott, the Director of E-Learning, to come and encourage faculty to participate in the various learning management system sessions that they were holding for Blackboard, Canvas, and Brightspace. I don't know about, I can't speak for all the faculty, but I was able to attend each of the sessions, and they got me really excited about the future of online learning in North Idaho College. The faculty assembly also held its elections. You're stuck with me again for another year. Joe Jacoby and Lisa Wilcox will also be serving their positions as well. And I'd like to take the opportunity to apologize to the previous faculty assembly leaders who cannot retire from the executive committee, because I'm going to still be here. We're currently seeking nominations for the Senate, and we will be electing those representatives in our next meeting. Also, at our next meeting, we've invited Chris Martin, Graydon Stanley, and Stephanie House to address tuition policy, as well as financial aid concerns. Lita Burns will also offer to attend once the faculty assembly passed a resolution at our previous meeting concerning transparency concerns regarding the College Skills Division and the campus space planning kickoff. The latter recently hosted a number of afternoon feedback forums. Some faculties, however, expressed it was difficult to attend these meetings, and they wished to have an opportunity to express their opinions in a collective manner, as well as for the future of College Skills Division. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much. Our next report is the Senate. Josh?
Good evening, Chair Howard, trustees, President McLennan, and guests. The college senate met on April 20. We had guests of Erin Davis, she's the co-chair of the Compensation Structure Committee, and Ken Werdensky, our Chief Information Officer. Our old items of business, we had a review of Policy 3.02.16, which was the Compensation Structure Policy. And it did pass from, by the Senate for the second reading. We had a second reading of the procedure for the staff of, of that specific policy for compensation structure, and that did pass with a second reading as well. The faculty procedure associated with the Compensation Structure Policy, we completed a first reading on that one. That one kind of got held up a little bit at our last senate meeting. Before that, we had some items that the faculty senators wanted to form an ad hoc committee on and look into a little bit further. They were able to provide that feedback at, at our April meeting and complete that first reading. We also had, as new items of business, Policy and Procedure 3.08.01, which is Acceptable Use Policy that Ken Werdensky brought to us. That one did complete our first reading. We also had a first reading of Policy and Procedure 3.08.02, which is the Email Usage Policy and Procedures. So, we're hoping to, to get all these kind of cleaned up at our, at our final senate meeting of the year in May. At that meeting in May as well, on the 11th, we'll be electing our new officers. And so, I won't be here next month. We'll have a faculty member most likely representing the senate as the chair. One thing I'd like to do is just to thank Lisa Kellerman. She's in the audience right now. She is the vice chair this year, and she did a fantastic job helping out with the senate. And I just wanted to thank her publicly because of all the work she's done on behalf of the senate, and really hoping that she's the chair this upcoming year. But that's all I have for my, my report, and I just wanted to thank you again for, for your time and for your willingness to hear us with our reports. And I'll take any questions that you have.
Any questions or comments?
There's a comment. Time flies. It's already a year, and you're off the hook.
Yep.
Wow. Well, nice job. It's been great working with you.
Well, thank you.
Josh, thank you very much for all the work you've done. Thank you. Our next report is the President's Report.
Oh, thank you, President McLennan. Thank you. I always say that I have two favorite days of the year. That's the day students show up, and of course, the day they leave, march across the stage at commencement. And so, I was thinking about tonight, I also realized I have a third favorite day, and that's the day that we present faculty to the board for tenure. And we're going to be doing that here in just a little bit. And so, I'm very happy about that. I would be remiss, though, we have a new member of President's Cabinet, who I don't think you've been introduced to formally. And I'd like to ask Don Milliken to stand up back there. And Don is our new Director of Human Resources. He is all the way into his second week at North Idaho College.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to turn some of my limited time over to Graydon Stanley.
Earlier this month, we had a board retreat, board workshop, where you were, shared, many of President's Cabinet members shared their areas and plans for the next 15 to 18 months. And Graydon wasn't there, and, but he's here tonight, and he's going to just give you a brief report on, on his work.
Now, Graydon, you realize that there was only 10 minutes that was allowed for his report, so he's already used five, maybe seven.
Mr. Chairman, I do. Thank you very much.
Fine tie, though.
Members of the board and President McLennan, thank you for the opportunity to real quickly talk about Student Services priorities for next year. I would also tell you that the reason I wasn't able to join you on Friday was I was donating my gallbladder to science on that particular day. I would have much rather have spent the, the day with you. So, sorry to miss you. You were, you were given, I know the president handed out to you the Student Services priorities at that meeting. If you have those with you tonight, you can take a look at that. I have extra copies I'm glad to give you afterwards. Real quickly, just wanted to note that they were broken down into three areas. One was enrollment, and it was particularly that focus that you hear about so often here on recruitment, retention, and completion. Most prominent that you also are hearing a lot about is making sure that we're aligning student and support services to guided pathways. It's not only that instructional component about how we organize curriculum, but how we provide services and support to our students. So, certainly, this next year, we've talked about early alert and intrusive advising, freshman year experience, mandatory orientation, cohorting, all these best practices that we want to make sure we're alongside, complementing our instructional partners to provide that. We've had a committee working on foundation scholarship and grants and aids to make sure that we're making the best use of those great resources provided by our foundation, to capture those students who wouldn't otherwise have an opportunity to come to school here, to use that money, often to incentivize the fact that they stay here, that they're successful, and they graduate. But we've had a number of proposals coming forward so that we can strategically utilize our grant aid and foundation dollars to, to get them the largest return from our students. Also, a number of new technologies that have come onboard in this last year, and then, in this next year, that we're working closely with. One of those is a recruiter CRM, a tool to help us work with prospective students and manage our communication with them. We implemented Student Planner that allows students to have a place to take a look at their schedule for the next four or six semesters, plan it out, track their progress to be able to help themselves. That was implemented this year. We have a financial aid students self-help portal that they can access. And coming forward, we have other products that we're looking at to be able to help our employees, help our students manage all of that information and process here. Ken and his staff has been fabulous in working with all our partners here on campus to make it a better experience for our students to access our college and, and complete their degree here. In another area, campus safety was one, where we talked about promoting and practicing campus and community safety and civility. You've heard reports on that. Probably most prominent is certainly the partnership that we have with Coeur d'Alene City Police Department and Detective Gus Wessels' presence on our campus. But Alex Harris and others have done a fabulous job in really having us ahead of everybody else, I believe, in our state relative to Title IX policy prevention. You heard about the Green Dot Program, Ling Kovee and those folks were here. That's about the, the awareness and information and culture changing. So, really proud of the work we're doing there, and we'll continue into this, this next year. Additionally, too, we, we have as a line item that was supported from the state is additional money to support technology assistance for students with disabilities. And Tim Gerlitz and his staff have, have done an exceptional job in providing services to that increasing number of students accessing our institution that have some need for assistance as they have disabilities. And finally, in, in student engagement, because of the Wellness and Recreation Center coming online, we certainly have a number of initiatives. We talked about last month about student health here, and we talked about another place to be able to deliver and promote student health with the Wellness and Recreation Center. So, partnering with Heritage, partnering with workforce development and bringing some of those programs over to the Wellness and Recreation Center will do more to engage students and the community as the result of that facility. Our veteran students here certainly is a growing population. You've heard from Carl George present this last year, and the exceptional things he's doing with that audience. We're looking at additional space and services to continue to provide the support that they deserve as well. And lastly, and with, with much thanks to the president for some of his ideas to this end, looking at making sure we develop next year some ceremonies here that recognize outstanding achievements of our students. Sean and I talked this year about trying to make sure at the end of the year that we're not only recognizing the outstanding leadership, but the outstanding scholarly efforts of our students, really putting together something that celebrates their achievements in the classroom across our campus. With Phi Theta Kappa and the awards that we've had, we want to make sure both at local, regional, and at the state level that we're recognizing the outstanding of our, outstanding achievement of our students through Phi Theta Kappa as well. Rick's had some experience, a couple of places he's been, has suggested that to me, and we're moving that forward, where you'll see some activities next year that really highlight the outstanding achievement of our students in the classroom. So, those were just a few. You have the other notes there, and I'd be really glad to answer any other questions that you might have about those.
Todd?
Two quick things. One is, I know I've said this before, but I'm very pleased to hear what we're doing with the space downstairs for the veterans. You know, it's near and dear to my heart, and supporting Carl, fellow, fellow Academy grad, so. And one of the questions I have, and maybe you're, it's going to be on an agenda in the next month or two, but I know you were kind of rethinking the agreement we have with Heritage Health. You mentioned them with the Student Rec Center. When do you think you guys might have decided how we want to proceed with that?
Chairman Howard, Trustee Banducci, I have a meeting next week with Mike Baker, who's the, the Executive Director for Heritage, and we're going through those processes. I suspect by the board meeting next month that we'll have that in place, and know what our future will look like in terms of providing student health services.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
I just have two more items, just very briefly, and I don't have a lot to report on this next one. But just to let the board know that Lita and Chris and I have continued our engagement with Gizmo and University of Idaho. We meet again this Friday coming, and we're really having some good conversations about[1793.57]
We meet again this Friday coming, and we're really having some good conversations about what our strategic alliance is going to look like and how we plan to move forward together in the future. And I'm really pleased with the direction of that. And then lastly, with regard to the statewide, the governor's statewide task force on higher education, I'm on the subcommittee for the K-20 pipeline, and this group was asked to submit their thoughts on three non-financial access barriers. And we spent quite a bit of time talking about this internally, and I've shared this, but I do want to read these here. And so there's three brief bullets, and they are, "There's a disconnect between what high school students know about today's workforce needs and the reality of rapidly evolving labor demands. We need to have more deliberate and focused attention on meaningful career development and coaching." The second, that moving the needle on college attendance and completion for a large percentage of students who are first generation and/or less academically ready requires a life cycle of support, mentoring, advising, academic rescue, and so on. These students don't typically view themselves as college material, and we need to emphasize sustained student support in policy and funding. And then third, Idaho has not been successful in creating broad understanding and acceptance of the higher education value proposition for students, for parents, and possibly for guidance counselors. And a question, what does "it," higher education, mean, and why is it important? If we truly have, if we truly don't have anyone to waste in our state economy, what does not wasting anyone look like from a policy, funding, and marketing perspective? And we'll be discussing that more at the state task force. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? I'd like to make a comment on your three bullet points because you did email those out to the trustees. We got a chance to look at them, and I think to many, sort of outside the influence of this governor's task force, it may just seem like another task force. But in my mind, this task force is going to be setting the guidelines for education for the next five to 10 years. And so these bullet points that you created, I thought were very good, and I wanted to congratulate, and I was going to call you and do that, but since you're sitting right next to me, I'll just tell you.
I appreciate that. I had a lot of help with them, but thank you very much.
Our next agenda item, Todd, would you report on the K-Tech?
Be glad to. Thank you, sir. We had a meeting today, had the pleasure of being there for almost two hours, as it turned out. Lot to deal with. Just a couple things I'd like to mention. Voted to extend the contract, the young man that's had the interim title for this past year, but he's going to take over as the permanent, I don't know if we call it a principal or what we call it out there, but so that decision was made today to extend his contract. So that was Colby. So congratulations to him. Job well done. And a couple things that he mentioned, they had taken some students to some skills competitions down in Southern Idaho and came back with several awards. Particularly, they noted a first and a third place, so they were very pleased with that. What they're doing there is very competitive around the state, and they're doing a fine job. The collision repair program run by Caldehoss and the folks over there at K-Tech have come up with an innovative way to offer that program to the students at K-Tech. I think I mentioned this previously, but K-Tech's going to help us with some funding, and we're picking up an additional instructor. And then the kids from K-Tech will have the ability to take collision repair in our facility. So they're, as we've been talking about, they're literally going to walk across the parking lot, if you will, and take class, but do it already while they're actually still at K-Tech. So everybody's very excited about that cooperative effort. And just going to finish off dotting some i's and crossing some t's on that, but we're real close to that coming together. And, oh, one thing I want to mention, we had hoped to see, you know, kind of the if we build it, they will come. And one of the exciting things that K-Tech mentioned today is that they've had a really strong enrollment for next year, to the point that right now, they actually have waiting lists for welding, automotive, and health occupations. So the product is being oversold right now. It's very exciting. So depending on where those numbers go, they may have to add and do some things because you obviously don't want to have too many waiting lists. We've dealt with that ourselves. But that's an exciting thing, that they're ramping up with their enrollment, which bodes well for our enrollment and everything moving forward, and hopefully them as a pipeline. A small sidebar, something I witnessed last night, I had the opportunity to visit with Tim Straw, one of our welders, great guy, at the Tech Connect last night. And I'm in there, and there's a young man and an older guy, and the older guy's his dad, and the young man's a 17-year-old, and he goes to Corlaine High School, but he's enrolled at K-Tech, so he's doing that, the program. And the dad was querying Tim and asking all sorts of questions about, for his boy to come over here this next year. It was, it was very, I don't use the word exciting, but encouraging to hear that dialogue, that exchange, as Tim's telling him about the possibilities and the programs, and the dad's just excited. He's, Tim's here on the table, and the dad's here, and the son's kind of here watching him, you know, and the dad's asking lots of questions, and that's, it was just neat to see that. You know, there's a father with his son, and they're working on his future and talking to Tim, who's, you know, going to help build that future and help him get a skill and, or further a skill and, you know, get a job, hopefully. And so, but one thing that did come up that's interesting is, we also had to talk about what sort of aid is available, and had to talk about it's got to be the two-year program for the federal money through the FAFSA, but if you do the one-year certificate program, and I was happy to say, yeah, you know, but we've got a really great foundation, and there are other sources of money. But those are the things that we need to keep working on and what we can do for those just certificate programs. And as part of that, just continue to make sure that our instructors are well-versed when they have those discussions and dialogues. Tim did a great job, but that they understand, you know, how many cards of the deck they've got to play with, you know, as they talk to these parents that are, you know, looking at their budget and trying to figure out how they can get their kids some education and help them. So anyway, it was, and it was a really a great night, too. I don't know if somebody else is going to talk about, but a lot of vendors, and maybe Rick might talk about that more, but a lot of corporate support, the aerospace. Cassie was very excited last night. You know, it was a great turnout, and the aerospace people really were supportive. And Sue did a great job today, by the way. So anyway, just wanted to share that because that was a good experience.
Thank you. We have no old business tonight, so our next agenda item is new business, tab one. And I'll echo the comment made by President McLennan that, you know, celebrating success is one of my favorite things that we do every month, but this is one of my favorite things that we do once a year, and that is to approve tenure. And I thought maybe we should put the budget first, but I didn't think you'd appreciate that. So Lita, would you please take over here and introduce us to the new tenure candidates?
Yes, Chairman Howard and members of the board, Dr. McLennan and Mark Lyons. It certainly is a great pleasure to stand before you, to be able to present the faculty who are coming up for tenure this evening. I agree wholeheartedly with Chairman Howard and Dr. McLennan that this is the best board meeting of the year in April. Chris thinks it's because he's presenting the budget, but really, it's not that at all. And thank you for not putting us behind the budget. So I would like to invite the faculty who are for tenure to come stand up here with me this evening. And as they're coming up, I do want to acknowledge the full crowd that we have this evening and thank faculty and staff and family who have come out to support our tenure candidates this evening. And so for the benefit of our newest board member and others who may not be familiar with the tenure process here at North Idaho College, our new HR director, I would like to just briefly describe the process. You know, it is a rigorous process that the faculty go through to earn this title of tenure. To begin with, when the faculty are hired in a tenure track, the first fall that they are hired, they're asked to put together a faculty evaluation team. The faculty evaluation team consists of, at minimum, two faculty members, but sometimes more than that. Certainly, a tenured faculty member from their discipline, and then an additional faculty member that may come from a different division or discipline across campus. This faculty evaluation team then begins to evaluate the faculty once each semester during those first six semesters while they are in the probationary years of the tenure process. In addition, their division chair also evaluates them every single semester. The faculty are also evaluated by every student in every single section of every course they teach during those six semesters as they are in their probationary period. And the faculty are required at the end of each of the probationary years to do a self-evaluation. At the end of the first year of hire, the faculty evaluation team and the division chair meet together to discuss the progress that the faculty has made. And then they sit down with the faculty member to offer them suggestions that may help them improve teaching and classroom management. So it's a real collaborative sort of process that they go through at the end of each year. That same evaluation process occurs at the end of the second year and at the end of the third year of the probationary period. Then, as the faculty moves into the fall of the fourth year of their probationary period, the faculty evaluation team comes together again to offer their recommendation for or against tenure for the faculty member. The division chair also provides that evaluation and a recommendation for tenure. The faculty are required all during the years to maintain a portfolio of all these evaluations. The portfolios, as you have seen, become very thick, three-inch binders that house all of their evaluations from all of their students, all of the recommendations from their FETs, from the division chairs, and their own self-evaluations. Those portfolios then are turned over to the tenure committee, a committee of their peers, all tenured faculty, who review those files very carefully. Each member reviews every single file. And then, at the end of the review process, the tenure committee render a recommendation for or against tenure for the faculty members, and they turn that into me. It is then my opportunity to sit down with those files and really learn about our faculty. And I was trying to think of an analogy of what that experience is like, and I don't want to be disrespectful or in any way insultive about this as I use this analogy, but for me, it's kind of like a workout. You know, when you're going to engage in a workout, the mental process you have to go through to actually get to the gym is kind of, I've got to go to the gym, I've got to do this, you know, and then you kind of get started at the gym. It's like, ugh, you know, each step's a little harder, a little bit on the treadmill, until you really get going, and then all of a sudden, you get that adrenaline rush. And as you are completing your workout, all of a sudden, you just are amazed at how good you feel. That's sort of the experience I have of going through the portfolios of the faculty. And the negativeness or the reluctance is just how big and daunting those evaluations are. And because I read every single comment from every single student that has taken their courses, it does become tiring, you know what I mean? But honestly, when you get into those files and you begin to learn about the outstanding work that the faculty do, read the comments provided about how they engage with students, it is exhilarating. I do get that adrenaline rush, and it's almost like I can't wait to get to the next one and get started and move through the next one. So it's my way of really getting to know the faculty very intimately through their tenure files. Teaching effectiveness is obviously the biggest area of emphasis when we look at tenure review. However, the faculty are also evaluated on their educational qualifications, professional growth, ability to meet contractual responsibilities, professional ethics, and continuing performance. Each of these faculty members' files, in each of these faculty members' files, you will find evidence of how they personally and professionally invest in student success. I have recommended to President McLennan and present to you the following faculty requesting your consideration for conferral of tenure. And as I announce their names, I'd like to give you just a little snippet of what I learned in their tenure file. So first off is John Downey. He's from the Natural Science Division, and he is a chemistry instructor. What I learned about John was, not only is he extremely bright, very intelligent, recognized by his students, but he goes from zero to 60 very quickly. As a new faculty member, he, in just a very short time, took on being lead instructor on the upper division chemistry courses, which doesn't often happen in chemistry. You usually have to kind of go through the ranks, earn your stripes before you get to be awarded that opportunity of being designated as the lead faculty. So John did that very quickly. Next is Jason Drosh, math, computer, science, and engineering division. And where's the family? Oh, there we go, there we go. And he is math instructor. Jason is very precise. His students value his ability to communicate math in a way that they can understand it. Jason took on the challenge, as we got the aerospace grant, of helping us to redesign math courses for our CTE areas, did an outstanding job on that. Also, a quick study, getting tenure today, but has served as a division chair for the math division for this entire academic year. Next up is Kimberly Mitchell. She's from the nursing division, and she is a practical nursing instructor. I don't think I have ever read a tenure file where not one single student had a negative comment to make about an instructor. The students just glowed about Kimberly, mostly about her care and compassion and how she demonstrated that to students, pretty amazing. Next, Erlene Pickett.
Nursing.
And she is associate degree nursing instructor. Well, first of all, I want to give a little shout-out to Erlene because Erlene was on my hiring committee back in the day. Been a few years. So why is she receiving tenure now? She, you know, lost her head for a minute and left our college and went to a different college for a while, but then saw the light and came back at some point, and here she is. She went back into industry for a while, then came back to North Idaho College, and here she is receiving tenure. Erlene is also described as being very caring and very grounded. Students feel very, very comfortable in her presence, and that was a common thread through Erlene's tenure file. Next is Tracy Struble, Communication and Fine Arts. She's on this side of me. And she is a communication instructor. Tracy is also seen as being very student-engaging, both in her classroom, but more importantly, or not more importantly, but equally importantly, is outside of the classroom. Tracy leads students in a number of different groups and mentors them well, and that's what was quite common in her file. And then last but not least is Julie Van Mittelworth, Natural Sciences, and she is an environmental science instructor. What I found in Julie's portfolio was, speaking about how Julie doesn't only teach to the subject, she teaches students to live in a global world and how the impact of what they do, how they behave, how they engage with their environment is going to impact society as well. So I present to you these faculty for conferral of tenure this evening.
Thank you. Board, I would entertain a motion, excuse me, to approve the tenure of the candidates that have been introduced to us.
Mr. Chair, I'd make that motion.
All right, do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
Todd, all right. Any calls for, doesn't really call for any discussion, but is there any discussion?
Just real quick, I want to thank you for your hard work and professionalism. It's a lot to get to tenure, we realize that, but it's also so incredibly important, and we know that our students are getting the best of all of you. So thank you so much for everything you do.
Ken, if I may?
Yes.
Just one thing, Jason, you started here. Outstanding.
I had to come back.
Glad to have.
I love you so much. I try to stay longer, but...
It's good to have alumni come back and visit us. Well done.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of granting tenure to these candidates, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. You are all granted tenure, and with our great appreciation. Our next agenda item is probably the most difficult one of the evening under new business. It's the first reading of the college calendar. Graydon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, President McLennan, and other guests. I'm sorry to put this in front of you tonight to have to deal with, but it's an annual Grayden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, President McLennan, and other guests. I'm sorry to put this in front of you tonight to have to deal with, but it's an annual write that we have to go through. That is the setting of our college calendar, and you know, at this institution, we do that 10 to 12 years ahead of schedule. There's a calendar committee that is tasked with this job. It represents all the constituents here on campus, and they look down the road to see when these dates should fall. You know our semesters. We're anticipating in 2027 through 2029 that we'll still have two 17-week semesters, 16 of instruction, and a week for testing. And then we have our summer school delivered in four, six, or eight-week sessions. We are anticipating that staying the same in 2027 through 2029. Any changes that might come forward, we would bring those back in front of the board between now and then, but we provide that information to you. The calendars are attached there for both of those years, and so just asking your consideration on behalf of the calendar committee to approve those, please.
And since it's a first reading, we'll probably got a second reading next month.
Can I ask a question? Had an interesting thing pop up earlier today discussing calendars, and Brad will chuckle at this, but do we reach out to Lakeland and Coorlaine and Post Falls and try to coordinate with them a little bit? Because it's interesting to hear their discussion today about their coordination or...
Mr. Chairman and Trustee Van Ducci.
Apparently, this next year is off a little bit.
Certainly, we try every year to make sure this coordinates with all the Region One schools particularly, because we have employees of the college that their children go to those schools. And so we want to be coordinated with all those other entities. You know, there's a big difference in that calendar between the North and the South, but we try to be coordinated here. Occasionally, we miss those dates. For the most part, we try to be in coordination.
Well, my understanding is if you have questions, Brad was the guy that used to kind of lead that discussion, which led to an interesting discussion today and some humor.
Yeah, Grayden told me no once, so...
All right. Any further questions? Thank you, Grayden.
Thank you very much.
Our next agenda item is Tab Three with the first reading of the fiscal year 18 general budget.
Cheaters out. We're all getting our cheaters.
Chairman Howard, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to present the first reading of the FY18 general fund budget. I am shocked that not everyone finds this the most exciting part of the April board meeting, but it is my distinct pleasure to present to you tonight the proposal for the FY18 fund.
I tried to get you an audience, but they wanted to stick around.
I really appreciate this. So on that note, this is an annual process for the college. We go through an annual budget-setting process. One of the things that Dr. McLennan brought with him was a real desire to have campus conversations across the institution so that there was broad employee engagement in this discussion from the very ground level up. And that led to the prioritization of requests that are presented in this budget. The budget this year has been developed with a focus tying those to the departmental plans that each department puts together, or unit plans, and also incorporating the institutional optimization recommendations that came through last year's process of IO. In all of these discussions, you'll find two themes throughout this budget that are key focuses for the college. Those are enrollment management and planning. You received tonight a new packet of the budget. Each slide references the pages for that budget based off of changes that came from discussions with board members on the one-on-one conversations that we had. Unfortunately, this year, those conversations did not complete before the board book was due, so I apologize that you're receiving the hard copy of that tonight. The planning assumptions for the FY18 budget are predicated on a 3% forecasted decline in four-credit enrollment. We have seen a trend of declining enrollment, and with that trend, we have seen a decline in the trend and a leveling off of the enrollment over the last few years. We continue to see that. This is a conservative forecast. In looking at the spring semester and this past fall, in all likelihood, we will beat this 3% forecast, but for the purpose of developing a conservative revenue estimate, we're using the 3% decline. That would equate to a total impact of $242,000 on revenue this upcoming year, and that is a $242,000 reduction in revenue based on a 3% decline in four-credit enrollment. With that, as in past years, we are forecasting an increase in dual-credit enrollment. Last year, the forecast for dual-credit enrollment in the budget was 14%. We handily beat that forecast. Thank you to our dual-credit team in the advanced opportunities department. They've done a fantastic job. This year, we're forecasting a 7% increase, which would create $57,000 in additional revenue to the college. As that team has been so successful, we want to be mindful of the impact that we're having across the market, and we are saturating parts of the market. And while I don't want to tell that team they need to slow down, we want to be reasonable with our assumptions for them. Inside this budget, we've also made some assumptions regarding tuition. In this budget is a proposed $3 per-credit increase for in-district students and a $5 credit increase for all non-district students. In this proposal, one of the assumptions was a 1% increase in the maintenance and operation levy, as well as the change in employee compensation, which would be a step increase for all full-time staff and faculty. I think this is important to note. In page four of your packet, I'll look at the funding, and I apologize that not everyone in the audience will be able to see this, but I think it's important to note, this clearly shows how our enrollment trends are leveling out. But of particular note is the fact that this year, state funding makes up 39% of our budget, property taxes makes up 32% of our budget, and tuition and fees makes up 26% of our budget. There's 3% that's allocated to miscellaneous revenue. But as we continue the conversation tonight, this board has tried very hard to continue the funding alignment of a three-legged stool with essentially everyone paying a third. And the state, over the last few years, has really, we have been good recipients of increased funding in state funding by significant factors, more so than our community college colleagues. And so this represents the state continuing to improve on their level of funding based on what we saw in previous years. On page one, if we could just go over the revenue in detail, I think this would be an important time to note the revenue for next fiscal year. The FY18 general fund budget is based on a $47.1 million revenue budget. This is a 3.6% increase over FY17, which equates to a $1.69 million increase year-over-year. You'll note that a large portion of that is the state funding that we received through our line item requests through JFAC, as well as through the CTE state allocation. Of the $1.69 million increase for next fiscal year, $940,000 of that is the state appropriation, which represents an 8% increase over the prior fiscal year. The CTE allocation represents a 7.44% increase year-over-year, and is $350,500 of that revenue increase. You'll also note that there includes in the budget $300,000 in new property on the rolls. Trustee Wood wanted to note that this does include $94,000 from the de-annexation of the Lake City District. So this does include that change from last year.
Awesome.
Also included revenue is a proposed 1% levy increase, which would equate to a little over $145,000. That brings us to tuition. On page five and six of your packet, you'll recognize generally how we presented tuition in the past. The $3 per-credit increase for in-district students would generate $152,000 in tuition revenue next fiscal year. This represents a 2.19% increase to students. You'll remember that last year, we did have a $3 per-credit increase as well, but that was not tuition, and that was in support of the Student Wellness and Recreation Center. We're also proposing a $5 per-credit increase for non-district students. Depending on residency status for students, this would be between a 2.5 or a 1.5 increase, depending on where your residency status is. This would generate $141,000 in additional tuition revenue. Of note, the FY18 fee budget also includes, as it did this year, a fee holiday or waiver regarding the $11 student accident fee charged to students. Due to fund balance that was built up during the enrollment increases, we're able to cover that without charging a fee. We're proposing a new tuition model for discussion for next fiscal year. This is predicated on a culture change on campus that really focuses on full-time enrollment as being 15 credit hours. And while we acknowledge that that may not be the right move for all students, we're aware that it is the right move for many students who choose to attend full-time. 15 as full-time allows students to complete a two-year degree in two years, which is important. And this is really geared around encouraging completion, as well as allowing students some flexibility in their degree plan to take some of those additional courses that may be fine arts, or physical education, or additional college skills courses that generally are one-credit hour or two-credit hour classes. It also helps students in the sciences with their lab courses, as well as really benefits CTE students who also have large lab-credit classes. The tuition model is built around students committing, coming to NIC, taking a semester successfully of 15 credit hours, and then in following semesters, students will be eligible to take 16 credit hours at the cost of 13 credit hours. Going backwards to page two and three, looking at expenses, you'll notice that without the impact of a salary increase or without CEC, change in employee compensation, there was a $947,000 increase in the overall expense line to the college. This truly is the state line items, the CTE line items, and the benefit costs, our employer's share.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
Sure.
And I'm a little tardy, I should have raised my hand quicker. You were moving on the slides, but I apologize. Chris, somebody takes 15 credit hours, or 16, and they qualify for the next semester that they'll pay the equivalent of 13. Do they have to take 16 that next, or they could take up to 16? So they could take 16, 15, 14, 13, whatever they wanted that next semester, although to graduate, they'd really need 15 again, but, okay.
Yes, sir. Chairman Howard, Trustee Van Ducci, that's correct. It would be up to 16 credit hours, but it would be up to the student and their schedule, how that filled out.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
One question on that. I can't remember if I asked it in our budget meetings. This is proposed. Are you looking at this for fall, this coming fall?
We are looking at this for fall.
And when will students get the education on this?
So students are registering now, and after the approval of the budget, we will make a full-court press to ensure that students are made aware of this and able to take advantage of it.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I'm going to ask a question now that we're in the middle of that. On the expenses under the CTE instruction, it's my recollection that when CTE was first proposed in this state, that the state was going to completely fund the CTE operation, not only the ongoing operation, but also the, I think, the resources, the buildings, the equipment, and that sort of thing. And does this CTE expense, does this represent, does the amount of money that they budgeted for us this year represent the entire cost, or are we now subsidizing CTE out of the general fund?
Chairman Howard, we do subsidize CTE.
Do you know, can you give me a broad brush as to how much is it? A million bucks, or...
I think it's more than a million bucks. So $500,000 is what they currently are.
So if the state were to live up to its initial promise, they would need to allocate an additional $500,000 for us to break even, then?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman Howard, if I may, some of that variation comes from how we've funded employee increases over the years that CTE may not have funded. So that's a part of that difference that we have.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Chris, isn't it also different programs that we've funded that haven't been supported by the state? Because we, historically, we were put like a million dollars in our budget to make up the difference for CTE, and I don't think that can all be employee salary.
Chairman Howard, Trustee Wood, as we brought new programs on, we, in the last few years, we've tried to make sure that all programs had sustainability, and over time, we have been able to buy down that subsidy.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
So with the expenses, looking at the expenses on page two and three, essentially, without the salary impact, it truly is just the required items that we receive through the state line items and the CTE allocation. So when we make those requests, the state requires us to spend the money, oddly enough, as we told them we would spend it. So these represent truly the expenses associated with the appropriation we received. You'll notice that our expense budget for FY18 is $47.1 million. This is also an increase of $1.69 million year-over-year. That is not an accident. We are proposing a balanced budget to you, so revenue equals expenses. You'll also notice that, much as you've seen in previous years, the salary and benefit costs for the college equate to 71% of our expenses, with operating costs making up the difference.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I ask a question, sir?
Yes.
Chris, as we look at this, as we're trying to put this budget together for fiscal year 18, and we're putting up numbers for our instructor costs, but yet, we're in a process of evaluating the instructor compensation, so, and I'm not quite sure when we'll see that. So I'm wondering how we're factoring in, you know, what's that's going to look like? Because there are a couple moving parts there. And do we have a timeline, and how are we going to dovetail this together?
Chairman Howard, Trustee Van Ducci, for this proposal, we're proposing all things as they have been, continuing operating as the current policy exists today. This includes a step increase for all full-time faculty and staff. That's the predication for this budget. If my understanding, Josh, you'll correct me, but I believe this is, the salary compensation policy is going before the Senate in May. Is that correct, or is that the ad hoc?
We've already had the second reading of the policy. The procedures are still working their way through the Senate. We've got the staff procedure done. The faculty procedure still has a first reading, and then I'll pass it on to the president.
Thank you.
Yes. I think, though, that, I think the point that you're making, Chris, is that the current structure of the schedule maintains in, as it's working its way through the process now.
That's my understanding, yes. That was the point I was trying to make. Thank you for making it much more simpler than I did.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Kristi.
Under this salary and benefit cost, that made me think of a question I've been, every year, we try to ask the ratio. What's the ratio of full-time faculty versus adjunct faculty? Maybe Dr. Burns would want to... Do you have those numbers? Okay, approximate's fine.
I can give you approximate numbers. I think we are, across the board, about 68 to 32. It varies with programs. We have programs that go as low as 60, 40, and others that are higher, faculty ratio.
Okay. I think historically, we had hoped to be more around 75%, but, okay, thank you.
Chairman Howard?
Yes.
If I may, and Dr. Burns will correct me if I'm wrong, there is a variation between programs, but as a whole, we are close to 70, 30 now, looking at the entire institution. Do you have any...
Mr. Chair?
Disagree?
Yes.
Great.
Not to contradict Kristi, because historically, I only go back... Not to contradict Christie, because historically, I only go back a few years, so, but my understanding, and again, this is not a shot across the bow or anything, but at 70%, aren't we quite a bit higher than the typical community college, or in, higher than many of the colleges in our, in our region, and even our two sister colleges?
Chairman Howard, Trustee Ban-Ducci, yes, we have made a focused effort on having a full-time faculty, so we do look differently than some other community colleges, that's correct.
Good, we want to.
On page 12, there is, in the conversation regarding expenses, a discussion about new With this is included the instructional components that were funded through state appropriation and the CTE allocation. As mentioned earlier, we received a state line item for an assistive technology coordinator to help us ensure that we're serving students with assistive technology needs. Funding for a Title IX coordinator. State CTE received funding for instruction, instructor for medical lab technician, as well as for hospitality management. I'll piggyback off of the ICE presentation. We've been very diligent, and I appreciate CTE's support in this, to establish sustainability by asking for line items, and through CTE to support new programs. You'll recall, last year, we had quite a few, our sister colleges were not pleased with us, quite a few faculty positions funded towards aviation and advanced manufacturing as that grant has rolled off. This year, the focus has moved towards the medical field. The general fund positions that are being requested for FY18 include an instructor for computer science, as we continue to expand that program and work to build a pipeline for the two-plus-two program with the University of Idaho, an administrator for the college skills area, a dual-credit advisor. As dual-credit has grown and that work has really gone beyond anyone's wildest imagination, their students do need more support, specifically regarding advising, a chief planning officer to help direct the strategic planning initiatives of the college and make sure that we're working in cohesion and that all of our planning is moving us forward, a dean of enrollment to really manage the strategic enrollment aspects throughout the institution, that we, again, are working towards students' best interests, that we're collaborating, and really building a really successful model for increased enrollment at North Idaho College. An assistant, excuse me, administrative assistant for the development division, this would be an upgrade to a full-time position from what is currently a half-time position, a purchasing coordinator within the office of finance, as we have continued to be in the grant business and continue to be in the building business. We've done an amazing amount of purchasing and contract work over the last 16 months, and that looks to continue. This would provide coordination for that. And then sign language interpreter, this is currently a contracted service. Again, Vice President Stanley mentioned the Work of Disability Support Services. They've really met a need in our community and have really grown, grown our population that needs the sound language services, and we've tried really hard to provide those services in a way that is efficient and meets student needs, and it was determined that a position would actually better meet those students' needs. This is being funded through open and unfilled positions. So, you'll notice that we had nine full-time budgeted positions in FY17 that we're converting to these eight positions in FY18 with the approval of the Board. The net difference between the FY17 positions that were open and the FY18 positions that we're requesting is $36,000.
I'm probably just missing something, but when you say there are nine full-time budgeted positions, are those the ones that are listed there under FY18 positions?
No, sir. The FY17 positions, we just lumped those with the salaries that were, and benefits that were included. We didn't list those out individually.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Chief Planning Officer, $146,549. I know that from our discussion, that also is supposed to include cost of benefits. So, I don't know what the base wage salary is, how much the benefits comprise that, but it's a lot of money. How did we come up with that number?
Chairman Howard, Trustee Ban-Ducci, that was based off of the current salary range for other individuals on campus who were in a similar graded position. So, looking at chief information officer, chief communication officer on campus, this falls within that range.
Yeah, I might add that it's, if I may, it's also a direct report to me and will be a part of President's Cabinet, so it's an executive-level position.
Not all bad, working in education.
Moving through the other components of the budget, beyond the general fund budget, which is truly the core operation of the college, student services, academic instruction, facilities, there are other components of the college, and these are represented here. This is page 10, the fee-based budgets. Those are, student fees actually support these functions. This is budgeted at a revenue and an expense of $2.33 million. The fee budgets are fees that students pay. These provide support for the Associated Students of North Idaho College, student health services, recreation and activities, athletics, and commencement. The service units, you'll find on page 11, we're proposing $5.6 million in revenue for the service units with a projected net income of $168,000. The service units include the DHC Operations, Dorm Housing Commission Operations, and those include bookstore operations, student union, residence hall, food service, and the new Student Wellness and Recreation Center. These also include the workforce training center, the children's center, and auxiliary And then page 14 are the grants. As you're aware, the college has been extremely successful in, at this point, really the past four to five years, in seeking grants. We, as mentioned earlier tonight, are running out on the end of the TACT grant, and so you'll see a dramatic decline year-over-year in grants there as we transition out the TACT grant. So, for the purposes of the FY18 budget, $6.79 million in budgeted revenue and expense. Of important note is the $240,000 in indirect costs back to NIC. And these are the indirect costs provided by grants to allow us to operate them and provide support for the backend services the college provides to operate these grants. The grants listed include the Area Agency on Aging, Head Start, the healthcare grant, which is a TACT grant, and other grants. Of particular note, Trio, the Idaho Small Business Development Center, and the Embry The total consolidated budget for the college, you'll find on page 15, it makes up the general fund, the fee-based funds, the services, and the grants. For FY18, the total institutional budget, including general fund and the affiliated pieces, for FY18, $61.9 million, with expenses forecasted of $61.7 million. On page 13, you'll note one-time expenses that are proposed to the Board of Trustees. This is a really interesting conversation. This is part of a strategic effort to buy down some of the fund balance the college has built up for capital expenses and truly one-time initiatives. You'll notice those here, those include furniture replacement, salary analysis, implementation of a new performance management system, implementation of guided pathways communications, general equipment, a technology center upgrade for the testing center, and campus space In the appendix, you will find the proposed course fees. We present this to the Board annually. These are all the fees associated with various courses across the campus. There are 12 pages of small print, and I apologize for the small print. I wanted to go through a couple of those, just make some notes. These are evaluated annually by each division, and I will tell you that we've made a concerted effort over the past two years to really ensure that our fees are aligning with the expenses in each of these programs and working as best we can to reduce these wherever possible. You'll notice that these, throughout this, you'll see detail on why these changed, and the changes are based on course demands as well as cost increases or decreases. Specifically, the course demands, some of the certification courses require examinations, and those are included in the course fees for students. Specifically, in the IT programs, you'll notice the certifications that are required by industry. And then new programs. With the ICE grant, we've brought on several new programs, and so, of particular note this year are surgical tech and dental tech. There are, there are some significant increases in those programs. Those are really driven by the development of new programs and coming off of grant funding, the need to make those sustainable. And with that, I would be happy to stand for questions.
Any additional questions?
Oh, no, there'll be plenty, sure.
Just so everybody knows, we have, as part of this budgeting process, scheduled a Board Budget Workshop for May 9, and we'll go over this again in some detail and have opportunity for additional discussion before the second reading, which comes up in our next meeting the end of May, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
As I look at this budget, I've already met with you, so you know I have some concerns, some fundamental disagreements with some of the philosophy. I'd like to state for the record, I'd like to hear again how much our surplus is, what is our reserve, how far are we above the recommended reserve by our auditors, and where we sit financially at this moment.
Chairman Howard, Trustee Ban-Ducci, currently, we have an estimated fund balance of $17 million. That is not all liquid cash, but the fund balance is $17 million. Looking at our proposed budget for next year, that's, that gives us a 36% reserve currently on that. I would note that that fund balance includes the Board-designated funds set aside for capital improvement. Generally speaking, we would like to see that between 15 and 22%, depending on what's going on with the environment around us.
Yeah, Chris, do you know what, if you pull out the capital reserve portion of that, what does that look like?
We're closer to 30%.
And 30%, right, okay.
Currently. And that amount fluctuates throughout the year, depending on when we receive the tax revenues, but that is currently where we're at.
So, here's my question then, Mr. Chairman. If we have, we're asking questions, but are we expressing concerns at this point, or things we'd like to see changed, or are we waiting for the workshop for that?
No, probably the workshop's a better forum for us to have a complete discussion on that, but it's my understanding that there was also some discussion about how that general fund balance was going to be maybe reallocated, development of a land acquisition fund so that there was money available for acquisition as it became necessary close to the, excuse me, the campus property, and also moving some of it into the capital, to the capital improvement fund, or whatever we call it, I can't remember the name, so that we can start to save money for our next building project. So, it wasn't all going to stay in the general fund, and is that part of this budget proposal?
Chairman Howard, that is part of the budget proposal. The motions to move that will be in the second reading, as we did with past presentations, but that is part of the plan. Yes, sir.
So, we can talk about that during the workshop in terms of those plans on what to do with that general fund? Christie.
Mr. Chair, Chris, a couple of questions on salaries. I know that the proposal is to fund step, and I'm certainly in favor of that. I guess what I'm trying to discover, though, is, so for the CTE faculty, the state is providing a 3% COLA, is that correct?
Chairman Howard, Trustee Wood, they provide a 3% allocation, and it has been left to our discretion. In the past, we've funded steps with that, but it is not required.
It's not required to spend the 3% on the faculty?
On steps.
On steps. All right, so I'm trying to understand, I'm looking at the salary schedules, and I understand the steps, but when you, when you reach your maximum, for instance, for staff, you meet your maximum at 13 years, or classified staff, you meet your max at 12 years, have we, in this budget, proposed any kind of a COLA? Because they certainly wouldn't get a step.
Chairman Howard, Trustee Wood, we have had a practice of awarding all individuals who max out their steps. They receive essentially a lump sum of, depending on the year, between 2 and 2.5% of their salary on an, as a lump sum annual basis.
But it doesn't go into their base?
Correct.
It's more of a one-time?
Correct.
Okay. How long have we been doing that?
I can speak for the last three years, that's all we've done.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Huh. I'd rather see it in their base, but, but we are addressing, those employees are still...
They do receive recognition for their time of service, not in the form of a step, but they do receive payment.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Did you have something to add? Yeah, Rick, go first. So, with, the step is a piece of this, that's less than 3%. It does, there's variability depending on where somebody is on the schedule. Then there's another portion that goes into building the base, so that for the, those folks at the top of the schedule, in addition to that feature, there's a, there's a, another feature that does raise the base and would apply to those people at the top as well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Chris, help me make sure I am understanding this correctly. Some of our chats, we get the 3% from CTE, which we can apply at 0, 1, 2, or 3% towards salary or use it for other functions. If we do the full 3%, and then are concerned about reciprocity or equalization, or whatever word you want to use, through the rest of the faculty, and we fund that, the amount that the state provides actually only covers about a third, we'd have to put about two-thirds of the total amount out of our pocket if we were to do a 3% across the board.
Chairman Howard, Trustee Ban-Ducci, that's correct. I want to just clarify one thing. With the allocation we receive for CEC, even for CTE, we have to use it for salaries. We can't use it for other things besides salaries and benefits, but you're correct.
But, okay.
We have one-third match for the general fund employees that are not CTE-funded to make whole the 3% CEC.
Okay, and this follows similarly to what we saw a couple of years ago when we did the 4%, and then last year when we did the 3%.
That is correct.
Any other questions? Okay, Chris, thank you. Is that to complete your report?
That completes my report, thank you.
Thank you.
See you at the workshop.
See you at the workshop.
Thank you. The next gen item is the Board Chair Report. I guess what I would like to remind everybody, obviously, we're getting into the graduation season, one of those celebratory week or two where we get a number of different graduations. We have the Patrol Academy graduation on the 4th of May, Adult Education GED graduation on May 4th, again, the NIC Board Workshop on the budget is May 9th, Associated Degree in Nursing Penning Ceremony is May 10th, and the NIC Commencement Breakfast and Ceremony is May 12th. And we have a human rights banquet that we're going to have representatives from NIC at on April 28th, and obviously, there's the ASNC Spring Banquet on May 3rd that we're all looking forward to coming to. In terms of my report, other than that, I have only to report that, I think in prior meetings, I've indicated an ongoing inquiry into a program which we call... meetings, I've indicated an ongoing inquiry into a program which we call Education in Lieu of Incarceration, which is looking into whether or not the community colleges in the state can offer a pathway for certain designated felons to get an education. Research indicates that higher education reduces recidivism or repeat by about 46 percent. It's a very effective way of keeping people out of prison and, and in keeping productive, keeping people as productive individuals in society. I'm meeting on Friday with the Governor's Task Force on Incarceration and Enforcement, and it's a group of about 20 people from the courts and from parole and probation, and legislators, representatives from across the spectrum, to present to them the idea that maybe community colleges can help in that endeavor. It's a pretty undefined program right now, but if, if they're supportive of that, we might be back here reporting to you about activities that we're going to be asking of not just NIC, but community colleges around the state, to help reduce recidivism and help people, keep people out of jail and out of prison. So it's kind of an exciting project. If it gets off the ground, it's still in its infancy. I report it to you only because I think the more I talk about it, the more it's likely to happen, so.
[laughing]
That's the, that concludes my report. Any remarks for the good of the order?
I have one, just a positive. I was, it was great to hear the presentation on the Idaho Center of Excellence. Christie, thank you for that. And it reminds me of the graduation coming up on the 10th. I'm looking forward to being there. I've only missed one pinning in five years, but I'm sure that this was helpful in getting all those students there and helping them with their success. Do we have any idea how many we have walking or graduating? Just was curious. Looking forward to it, though. Sure it'll be, auditorium will be filled with a lot of excited folks.
Okay, Christie.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to mention that the Human Rights Banquet that we're holding on April 28th, all the, almost all the proceeds from that banquet, the Cootney County Task Force on Human Relations gives to the Human Rights Education Institute, which is our sister organization. Dr. Burns is, I believe, Board Chair right now, and we give that to them so that they can provide scholarships to NIC for students. And so really encourage people to come out to the banquet and help fund those scholarships.
One more comment before I adjourn, and Christie, I hope you take this message back. You had mentioned you had missed Judy not being here, and you would wish that she had had an opportunity to be here for your presentation. She assured me that she was going to watch this, so one of the benefits of having this taped and have it available is that she will see the presentation, and I'll make sure and remind her to look at it. So I thank you again. No other comments, we're adjourned.